Board now called to order. The first thing is I'd like to pass off the land acknowledgement to Director Jackson.
Thank you, Representative McKnight. We gather and learn on indigenous land. This is the land of the Coast Salish peoples, peoples of the Snohomish tribe, lands and waters that have significance, of the many speakers of the Shute seed, family of languages, generations of indigenous people past, present, and future, whose relationships with this place, these waters, these lands, these beings, human and otherwise, have shaped the communities that we call home. Southwoodby School District acknowledges this indigenous history and this indigenous present. And together, we steward a future with an indigenous future for all people connected to land and place. I just want to acknowledge how grateful I am that we've been able to dive into what this reading of the land acknowledgement means to us as individuals and as a community. And I want to restate the invitation for people who can speak to the indigeneity of this place. If you have ancestry of here, of this place, or if you wish to be a speaker on behalf of the land and indigenous people, please do email us, email me, and we'd love to create a community rhythm around the sharing of this acknowledgement. Thank you.
This is a business meeting, so if you wish to make public comment, you can go sign up in the back, or if you're on Zoom, simply enter a question into the Q&amp;A and enter your name and location. All right, are there any objections to the minutes and agenda as presented? Minutes and agenda approved as presented. I'll pass this off to Dr. Moshe.
I'm honored to be able to swear in our new student representative, Lulu. So Louisa Russo, would you step up here, please? So Louisa became a school board representative after going through an interview process and being selected by the school board. So if you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye, say your name. Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Washington and will faithfully discharge the duties of student director of the Southwoodby School District Number 206 Island County, State of Washington, to the best of my ability? Congratulations. And Lulu, we invite you to take a seat at the table next to Callahan. Callahan is now the senior representative of our student school board representatives. And Lulu is taking her seat, and Carter, I turn back to you.
All right, on the consent agenda, I just want to point out that we have a pretty nice cash gift from the Southwoodby Athletic Boosters for athletics. As someone who's in ASB, this is a very appreciated gift. Are there any objections to the consent agenda as presented? Consent agenda approved as presented. And now I'll pass it off to me and Callahan for our student board member's report.
Okay, at the high school, there was a choir concert last Thursday. I had the pleasure of working the soundboard for that, and the students sounded lovely. There was a band concert recently.
Drack sent 25 athletes to state, which was a lot of athletes for Drack, a lot more than usual, which is really awesome. We had a really big assembly for Field Day, which was a success. There was a lot of games played, and it was a pretty okay day out, and it was a lot of fun. Then we had Field Day after that, which was also a hit. There was a slip and slide, lots of activities, students had a pretty good time. Students of Color Club hosted a culture fest day at Pajoma Place, where they shared different foods from various cultures. And it was pretty well attended, and there's a lot of different variety of stuff there, which was pretty cool. The new National Orange Society's members were inducted. And students, one thing I really want to highlight too, is that students were really involved this year in the hiring of the basketball coach and of the band director, which is something I think is really important. I've been involved in a couple of interviews. I think that's just one of the most important ways we can involve student voice in our district. ASB members were also elected this month, AP testing happened, a lot of end of year stuff. And next week is going to be the senior parade and graduation.
Yeah, this school year is wrapping up, and I think students are ready for a little break, but I think they're also like working really hard, so it's good to see.
Okay, in the middle school, we have the Olympic, Middle School Olympics closing ceremony, with 100% of the middle school participating, which is pretty cool. They did a lot of problem solving and athletics. Sixth graders head to Warm Beach Camp on June 2nd and 3rd, and seventh graders are going to head to Deer Lake for play and service learning on June 7th. I-Ready is also being finished up, which is a huge relief. I know at least it was when I was in middle school. The eighth graders' final week, they're taking a public transport-focused field trip to U-Dub and Pike Place, where they travel via ferry, bus, light rail, and sounder. They get to understand the Orca Card and stuff. This is one of the most amazing things I really think the middle school is doing recently. The Orca Card and that kind of like public transit is something I use like really frequently in high school, and I'm going to be using it a lot in the future. So that's really important to learn about. There's the eighth grade promotion dance at 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. coming up soon. And eighth grade promotion on June 12th at the Southwoodby High School Middle School auditorium.
Third graders through fifth graders had state testing this month. Fifth graders have a party at Lakeside Camp at Deer Lake. Third graders are heading to Deception Pass State Park. Fifth grade is going on a trip with the Kamana Woodby Land Trust to Keystone Preserve. There's a special assembly to honor fourth grade students on June 4th. And the PTA is hosting a Field Day for all students next week, which is wonderful. And then there's a dance party for students on the last day of school. And there's a parent who's a DJ who's like heading it for them, which is really exciting.
Thank you. I love hearing about all of the end of year events going on. It sounds like a wide variety of opportunities for students to get involved in different ways.
I have a question, and any of you three can answer. I've noticed some signs up around the district and other district-owned properties that are like, "Thank you for the levy," and there's work being done here because of that. I'm curious if any students have come up to you and asked about those or any other things about the progress of the levy and bond work.
A lot of students are kind of interested in the timeline, I think, of things. People know what's happening now, it's just like when it's going to be happening. People are excited for the definitely exterior to be done, which we know is happening this summer, or at least students all know that this is happening this summer. There's a lot of like, they don't know as much, and we're asking questions about like when the parking lot's getting done, that kind of thing.
I've had similar questions from parents down here at this building as well.
All right, now I'll pass it off to the board for the next agenda item.
Thank you, Representative McKnight. It's our pleasure to thank you for the intense work and thoughtful consideration that you've brought to this board and to student representatives throughout the state. You've been an exemplar, not just in our district, showing the amazing way to be a student representative, but also being a voice for students that don't have representation on their school boards statewide, and sharing what works well here and what doesn't with those other districts that do have representation, and bringing back what they're doing well and that we can do better. So I want to thank you for your time and your energy and your dedication. It's been very much appreciated. I'll turn it over to any other board members who want to say something.
I'll echo the praise that you've just received. And Cher, I really have admired the way you have a vision for state connections between students and their educational future. And your advocacy outside this district, from what you learn within this district, is really what we strive to nurture in students as part of our district's mission and vision. And I really admire that about you, and I thank you for providing that service for all the students of Washington State.
Plus one to all of that, Carter. And also very exciting that maybe not everybody knows is that you are an incredibly well-read individual. Every time we have a chat, you have a new book recommendation for me, and you have a real like, just passion for knowing and learning, and learning in depth the things that you are passionate about. And so I feel like that's going to take you really far in the future. And so plus one to everything everyone said, and also, again, just deep appreciation for the person you are and how hard you work.
I'll just add, how much it filled me with pride to see you up on stage at WASDA in front of the entire state. You're a leader among leaders, and you really put a face to the concept of student voice, which can be kind of an amorphous philosophy. And you just really have like a laser focus on improving it statewide, not just in our district. And I really appreciate that, and I hope that work continues. Thank you.
Ditto to everything everyone said, Carter. It's been a lot of fun serving on the board with you. And I also just deeply appreciate how, in your advocacy, you genuinely call people into a conversation about what is the impact their student reps are getting to have in the district, and really pushing it to be beyond just a performative role, but to have it have meaning and value to the board. It was fun presenting with you at WASDA. I'm glad we got to do that, and I look forward to what you get to do next.
Almost done with all the accolades. I had the pleasure of writing a letter of recommendation for his anticipated college applications, and it took me no time because Carter is all of the things that you all said. And what I'm always most impressed about is the depth of your knowledge on the spot, spontaneous, unprepared, and you know, you're respectful, but knowledgeable, and not afraid to say what you believe. So I've always appreciated that about you. And now you're going to say something, and then we're going to have pie.
Would either of the student representatives like to say anything else?
Yeah, you just inspire me to be a better student board rep, and I'm glad I got to work with you.
As someone like coming up into the student board rep position, I think it's been really fun to get to see how you always involve yourself in our school, and you're always really expressing how you feel about just every topic put to hand. And really well-said way, too, so thank you.
Okay, well, thank you all for those really kind words. That's amazing. I just want to thank everyone here for this, being, having this position, number one. And not just that, but also encouraging it among other districts. I think that kind of leadership right now has been really like, it's pushing the envelope, and it doesn't just stop at pushing the envelope in our district, but also pushing it onto a larger statewide level, which is kind of what you guys also said, too. But I think, I want to thank people like, let's go, like Brooke Williford, and that's sorry, Director Williford, for being up there on the panel with me, and really just being like, letting me do the speaking on the panel, but then providing a board input on that. That's just like an amazing like way to go about, I think, student voice, I think. I want to thank like Director Greenharin for all the, what's it called? Mentorship, yes, I've gotten over the years. It's been really amazing to be able to have someone to like, understand board stuff about. And everyone on this board has been really influential in helping me be able to use this position to its greatest, so I want to thank everyone there.
Thank you, and I believe that there are snacks. So let's take a... May I suggest to the chair that we take a 10-minute recess to have snacks?
Motion approved.
And sorry you're missing pie.
You know, I'm sorry I'm missing pie, too. I'm missing Carter's send-off, but I'm glad he got a solid pie moment in there at the, and some festivities.
Okay, next up, we have public comment. Is there any public comment on, in the back? And is there anything online? All right, okay, next we'll move to memorandum 24/2532, approval of resolution 697, WIAA membership renewal for 2025 through 2026. Is there any discussion?
I'll give my yearly pitch. The WIAA is the governing body for sports and intramural activities throughout the state. Our membership in it allows us to compete against the other schools in our district that are all, also members of the WIAA. Sports and other intramurals are scientifically shown to be the most cost-effective intervention in improving academics. And so it's easy to think of sports as a secondary thing or a distraction from academics, but they're actually very woven together. And so I'm proud to serve as our WIAA rep, and I urge the board to approve this resolution to continue our membership so students can take advantage of all the opportunities.
All right, could I get advisory votes for memorandum 25, 242532, approval of resolution 697, WIAA membership renewal for 2025 through 2026?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Wait. Oh, aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next up, we have memorandum 242540, approval of the May 2025 school bus surplus. Oh, memorandum was approved. Any discussion on the second memorandum?
I'd just like to invite Dr. Moshe to make any comment on this.
As the board knows, we surplus buses as they come up to be surplus. The state actually provides the funding for school buses, and then they are depreciated over time, and then we surplus them. And this continual renewal cycle is what you're seeing in front of you. It happens most every year, some years not, but for the most part, we do this surplus on an annual basis.
And I noted that one of the-
And Paul has got something he wants to say.
So this is, so we got a new electric bus that came in recently, and this is in conjunction with the purchase of that bus. We were able to leverage trading in some of our diesel buses that are falling off of depreciation schedule, so we're no longer getting funding for them and leverage that surplus of the buses in the purchase to lower the cost of the electric bus.
That's much more eloquent. Thank you, Paul.
Okay, can we get advisory votes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor of memorandum 242541, approval of the May 2025 school bus surplus?
Aye.
Memorandum is approved. Next up, we have memorandum 242541, approval of equity team charter. Passes off to Joe Moshe, Dr.?
Dr. Joe works. There you go, right in the middle. So the board heard from the equity team two weeks ago at the workshop and discussed this. This is much like our climate action work. This is again putting our equity team officially under the board's guidance. And so this is what you talked about last meeting.
And I would like to thank the equity team for putting together such a comprehensive charter and laying out not just what they're doing now, but next steps and how to move forward with it, making certain that all of our students are served as they need.
And one of the things I did want to mention to the board regarding this and many other discussions that you will have on June 18th, when you do your goal-setting for the following year, that goal-setting is what prioritizes the work of the district and prioritizes the use of the budget. So I'm sure this and the Climate Committee and other things that the board is prioritizing will come up at that time.
Yeah, how we spend our money is one of the ways that the board can emphasize what matters to us. So I think that that's an important thing to keep in mind as we move into the goal-setting and budgeting process. Any other? Sorry.
All right, maybe get advisory votes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Memorandum is approved. Next up, we have memorandum 24/2542, approval of the update to Southwoodby School District Policy, 2020 Course Design. I'll pass this off to Director Downs.
Right, okay, so this is the policy that we discussed two weeks ago. So the proposed keeps the language we added specifically around the curriculum instruction being reflective of diversity, cultures, and inclusive of special education and English language learners with the recommended word changes to simplify language.
All right, maybe get advisory votes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have memorandum 24-
Point of order to the chair. Don't forget to ask for a discussion before a vote.
Ask for what?
Ask for, ask if there's any discussion before each vote. There, okay. My apologies.
All right, motion is approved. Okay, next up, we have memorandum 242543, approval of the update to Southwoodby School District Policy, 2021 Library Information. I'll pass this off to-
All right, any discussion on this one?
Thank you, Ms. McCarroll, for getting the little language tweak that we caught in this discussion of this. Nothing else. We discussed this in depth last time.
Any discussion? Okay, maybe get advisory votes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This memorandum passes. Okay, next we have memorandum 2425, approval of the update to Southwoodby School District Policy, 2230, Transition to Kindergarten. I'll pass this off to-
All right, this just includes the language clarification we discussed two weeks ago. Any discussion?
I just want to say how grateful I am that this program is not dead in the water thanks to the, at least the sustaining, if not the expanding, efforts of our state legislature. So I'm glad that we can still offer this education to early learners.
Can we get advisory votes?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
This memorandum passes. Next up, we have memorandum 24/2545, approval of the update to Southwoodby School District Policy, 6801, Capital Assets. I'll pass this off to Director Downs again.
Yep, so this is just increasing the value amount to the recommended 10,000, making Mr. Fields' life a lot easier for us. And any discussion?
All right, can we get advisory votes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. This, this, oh wait, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This memorandum passes. Next up, we have memorandum 242546, approval of the 2025 through 2026 NWRDC contract. I'll pass this off to Dr. Moshe.
So we contract with NWRDC for data management and other systems and services for the district. This is an annual update to that contract. Nothing has really changed since the prior contract.
And the acronym is Northwest Data Resources.
Northwest Regional Data Center.
Thank you. I just always want to-
You want to try, it's under the direction of Wasipsy.
Any further discussion?
No, these are important services for the district and for our students and staff, so, yeah.
Maybe get advisory votes?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This memorandum passes. Next up, we have memorandum 2425-47, approval of the South Campus Unit Ventilator Replacement.
So we have in the A Pod, which is the one that is closest to us here. There are four rooms there. The unit ventilators, the heat basically is, it's limping along. And so those unit ventilators need to be replaced. We've gone out for bid, and actually, this came in at a good price for us. And just a heads up, as we are under construction and moving things around, it's really important, and we're getting new enrollment, it's really important that we have those classrooms ready to go because we may need to actually expand into them. So this is a proposal I hope you approve.
I hope that I'm correct in assuming that this technology is comparable to anything that we would want to adopt in the coming years, that it's modern and current and up to the standards that we're setting with our bond improvements?
It is, and that's part of why we pursued other opportunities, rather than just replace like-for-like.
Thank you.
And I noted in the proposal that there was a consideration of full heat pumps, but adding the necessary coolant issues was going to be problematic. And that is rarely necessary, the air conditioning here while students are in class. So I appreciate the due diligence done there and making sure that we're making the right choice.
I want to plus one that specifically because it's really great when receiving a proposal from the superintendent for the board to also see the thought process, what else you considered and ultimately didn't think was the best proposal. So that, I really appreciate that.
Keeps us from making questions like, "Did you consider heat pumps?"
Any further discussion? All right, maybe get advisory votes?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This memorandum passes. Finally, we have memorandum 24/25-48, approval of the Right of Way ROW, deed of dedication for Southwoodby School District campuses.
I'm going to turn this over to Paul. This has been an ongoing discussion with our bond folks and the county, and it's part of the permitting process, but Paul?
So for our land use permit for both sites, the county is capturing roughly 10 feet on our side of the road. I don't want to call it a land grab, but it's an opportunity for them to be able to widen the road. There isn't a plan for the county in any of their urban development to widen the road. At this time, is a fair, a thoroughfare between Langley and the highway, but they're trying to capture the land. So if they do ever decide to put in a turn lane or something of that nature, they can. So they're utilizing our permitting process to make us deed that land over to them. So both here and in front of the frontage in front of the high school. So they're patchworking it together as people improve their property along Max Welton. So it doesn't impede, I mean, it impedes on our property, but none of our functionality of our, how our school runs or how we enter and exit the facility. It's just part of doing business here with the land use permit for the work we're doing at both here on this campus and at the middle high school.
Thank you. I just want to note as a matter of personal opinion that if it ever came to pass that the county felt it was important to add a turn lane, that I anticipate that would be a safety upgrade for our students if the traffic volume were such.
if the traffic volume were such that it required it. And so that long, far off foreseeable possibility actually sounds like a plus.
As someone who drives their student to this campus to and from each day, I would love a turn lane. And if this makes it easier to do that, whenever the county is ready to do that, I am wholeheartedly in favor.
A similar topic, but perhaps I'll pose it as a question. What are the potential positives and negatives of seeding? I don't know what the right word is, giving part of this right away to the county.
They won't permit us if we say no.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's a pretty important one.
That's, that's the major negative. The positive is the opportunity down the road for the county to make a further investment in Max Welton. But in none of their forecasting plans into the future, our engineering and attorney Denise Stifarm went through their proposal. There's no plan. They're just utilizing the opportunity for if we do start busting at the seams again, roll back 25 years of enrollment, that they could start making investments in the center lane is what I'm assuming. Cause they're not taking enough to make it a four lane road and that doesn't really make sense. So it would only be a turn lane.
Thank you.
And would I be correct in assuming that stewardship of the land remains roughly unchanged in the sense of like mowing and maintenance and signage that we have up? I see, so really there's no material change now, but it just creates the opportunity for the county to do future actions.
Yeah, if, if they decided to do, like, cause we have the winding path that goes from here between this campus and the South Campus. We'd have to move our monument that is over here at this entrance if they decided to do something, but they're not making us do any of that work at this time. It's just deeding it over for a future opportunity.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, maybe we get advisory votes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This memorandum passes. Next, we have financial and enrollment report. Policy 6119 Annual Report on Uncollected Non-Tax Revenue. I'll pass this one off to Dr. Moshe.
So this is our normal board report. The policy that's in, in there is when we bring forward amounts we would write off in the last several years. It's been around food service. We're taking a little bit of a pause on doing that analysis here, given the free lunch status of the, the primary campus. It makes it a little bit, the timing of trying to evaluate which plant or which accounts we would potentially write off difficult because all of the meals here are free. So we're just pausing that. It hasn't historically been a significant amount of money, a couple of thousand dollars here or there for students who have moved away with a balance or things of that nature, or who have gone to free and reduced status and still had a minor balance, we would typically write those fees off as collected. We haven't dove into that analysis right now, given the free and reduced lunch status of this campus. We'll evaluate it in the future. So with that, this is the, our normal enrollment report. So we're still sitting with those 44 kids over our budgeted. So they've stuck with us all year long. That's been a good news and a good boost for our, our revenue for this year. Next slide. We are the green line here, so still just kind of bumping along like we have been all year long. Not a whole lot to report different from there. And this is the enrollment in a bar chart, so same information, just the bar chart. And then I was just bringing in the by grade level to kind of see where you can, this shows a little bit better where we gained kids this year compared to the prior years. And then that fourth and fifth grade, you can see our green line jumps up from the prior year. So we picked up a number of kids in fourth and fifth grade from some of those. They're not students that moved to Southwoodby, they're students that are in other programs on the island that came to Southwoodby School District is what the majority of them were when we looked into it more closely back in October.
It was fascinating for me to see that the cohorts were getting larger in elementary grades. Like each cohort, as they moved up in the grades was getting larger. So, so I think that speaks to a healthy growth rather than a sudden burst or blip, hopefully.
Yeah, and we've seen that historically too, as some of the other programs get the kindergarten, one, first and second graders, and they start migrating more and more, and then we have other programs on the island, not the district specifically, but other schools on the island that go K eight, and then we start picking them up as freshmen and sophomore. So that kind of leads into this, this is not typically in our report, but this is our budgeted FTE or we're proposing moving forward with our budget FTE. This was discussed in cabinet a couple of months ago. It's very similar to what we discussed with some immaterial tweaks. So we go through a number of ways of looking at our enrollment, a straight rule forward. So you take every grade K through 12, and then they become one through 12, and you bring in an estimated kindergarten group, the three-year average by grade, cohort survival rates. So we went through these sort of comparisons, and then at some point you just have to like, what is, what are we going to do and land on? The two yellow cells that I have selected there is where I've removed six kids from each of those grades, because that's where we got an unusual influx of students this year. And historically, what we've seen is we'll get some students that come from other programs for a year, and then they go back or they go to a different program. So we're just kind of following that trend here for a conservative approach to our enrollment for next year. But at the end of the day, we have 60 kindergartners budgeted coming in. We lose between 85 and 90 seniors, and then you take out those other 12 kids in the middle, and that's the change in the enrollment that we're moving forward with, with the next year, or what we're proposing moving forward with in the next year.
Just a question on the methodology there. It looks closest to the weighted two-year. And, and so how, how did you arrive at that being the more effective forecasting?
So the last two years are outside of COVID. So in the current year is the year that kind of puts a wrinkle in things, we picked up students. So comparing to that, but then it's just kind of going through on this, doing your best guess. So the weighted two-year was the closest to what our historical trend has been, minus the two students. And there's some other small tweaks we make along the way, but that is basically we're closest to the weighted two-year. And then it's an estimate the best that we can come up with.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah.
And I note that the budgeted amount is less than our current enrollment, but higher than last year's budgeted account. So I think that's a good place for us to be.
Yeah. And then this is just showing that.
It's very unusual, right? As you know, historically, for the past 25 years. So it's already a risk that we're saying it's higher. So I think it's a good conservative estimate, but it's progress, right?
And then our F203 revenue program from the state should open up within a month. So those are the numbers, those enrollment numbers are the ones I'm going to drop into that calculator to estimate our revenue, which is the first piece of our budget is estimated revenue, and then we drive all of our expenditures after that. So this is just showing the budgeted cohort compared to the average FTE for the prior couple of years. So are there any more questions about enrollment before we switch over into our normal financial report? So we're two thirds of the way through the year. 58% of our revenue and right on two thirds of our expenditures. So it's right on pace, it's really tight. We're, I've already looked forward into the future and our encumbrance has kind of changed. So as we get through this, we may end up having to do the budget extension again this year. We put it in last year and didn't need it by the tune of $80,000. But with the added enrollment and staff that we've added through the year, we're going to bump right up against our budget capacity again this year. So I'll know better next year or next month in May, when we bring forward, if we're going to move forward with a budget extension and let you know at that time if I think we actually need to do it. But I need to get that filed in June to give the ESD time to turn it, turn it around, so we just have that capacity again.
It's very impressive that the expenditure is year to date and the month in year is exactly even. I'm morbidly curious, do you know how far you have to go down the decimal to get a difference?
I, I don't, I will look that up for you unless you know.
Just was, wanted to know if, if you had it on the top of your head, I do not need you to look at it.
Yeah, okay, all right. So this is our, the same sort of spending with the encumbrances, and you can see the payroll is at 102% of what we've had budgeted. And we've had added staff through the year for student needs and just with the increase in our enrollment over budget. We've made that call that we can afford to do so. And then our total expenditures, which is everything else, the MSOCs and payroll are right at 99.18%. So that's getting razor thin, because we don't want to go over, if we go over a budget, it's not the end of the world. We just have to write a letter to OSPI acknowledging that we did so, but it's better to get a budget extension beforehand. So our revenue by month, it jumped up in 24, 25 like it always does in April for April collections, tax collections. And this is our revenue by source, so we, again, we are the green bar. Our local property taxes are up slightly, local revenues, that's, that's sales at the school, food service, class fees, things of that nature. Our state general apportionment, and then our state special purpose. And the main difference you can see is the COVID years where we still had ESAR dollars, and now those are gone away. So now we're just basically down to our federal title programs and special ed dollars.
I love seeing that the local revenue has gone up, because as I recall, the main source of that is rental at our community center and down at the South Campus.
That is correct, yeah.
So I, I love that we're providing those, providing a place for those services for the community, so, and recouping money.
So, and this is just again, getting ourselves ready for the budget presentations to come. Like where, where do we end up spending our dollars? Our certificated salaries historically is always the most, it is for every school district. Then our classified salaries, we don't break apart for this display, the benefits between the both, but it's roughly, we run about a 30% burden rate on our, our teacher's salary, or our teacher, or on all of our salaries, our fully benefited folks. Then regular supplies, services we pay for, and then the very minimal travel that you can, can see there.
It is really starkly apparent on this graph how much services have spiked in cost. I think that's a nationwide problem.
Yeah. So this is our fund balance percentage. It jumps up in April like it does every year because of our collection. So it's still just following that 20% range or within that 20% range. And jumping up in April, it'll draw down till July when we get apportionment changes in July. So it doesn't change in July, but you get more of it in July, so it jumps back up again in July. This is the statutory report, the budget status report. And again, showing that we're down to 99.8% or 185,000 of unencumbered dollars. So again, that's just getting a, a little bit tight if we were to have some emergency. We should be getting pretty close to having everything encumbered, but we are having an opportunity to do some summer work with our LAP funds. So we don't, so they don't get recouped. So we're working through that right now with Ms. Richards and team to have some summer reading where we can use that learning assistance program money. So that's where it starts getting, it wasn't necessarily in the plan, but we have the funds. And then if we don't use them currently, the state can recoup them next year. So that's part of the reason we may have to do the budget extension. I mean, that, that program's not going to cost $186,000 by any means, but as we start whittling away, that, that just gets thinner and thinner, so.
Don't give Suzie any ideas.
She, she knows what it is, she knows what her budget is. We've, we're, we're close to launching that full ham there, so. So here's our other funds, the capital projects fund. So we're actually starting to spend some of the, the money that's really going to start to flow when we tear into the building, starting in June. The construction trailer showed up today, so we do have two portables coming, but the portable building that's behind the school right now is actually a giant travel trailer and it's an office for ABSHUR. So that'll be wired independently, it's not a permanent structure, they could wheel it away tomorrow if they needed to. So if we see that and ask, that's what that building is back there. We are planning to sell, we're starting down the process to potentially sell the second round of the bond in September. If you get those dollars landed, because once we start getting pay apps, pay applications for ABSHUR, we're really going to start spending those funds. So I want those funds landed there, we can earn some interest on it in the meantime, but then not have to fight a cash flow problem. So that's tentative, the plan right now, we're still working through the final logistics, and we'll get a schedule of events for you once we get it settled down for certain. And we're doing it in September, so I don't have to try to deal with a bond sale at year end. So with that, are there any questions about the financial report?
I know it's getting to the end of the year, and as we heard from the student report, it's very busy for the students. Have you been able to keep in contact with the ASB folks to keep working on laying out how they're spending their money?
Yeah, we're still going through their, their transfer process. I've been in touch with Ms. Elsa, I'm sorry, I don't know Ms. Elsa's last name, Lehman. She's still working through her schoolwork and her testing and stuff, so getting together, we're trying to see if we can get in to do like a recap of, to review, to show where they've transferred the money. Like we want to spend our money here, and I move it to the account so they can manage their programs. They've did way more transfers than they ever have in the, the past, because we've given them the tools. Like if you want to spend it here at Chess Club, let's move the money to Chess Club. And there, I get them a couple of times a month to put those in there. So I'm working with her schedule to try to get her in there. It may not make it on a business meeting, but just a presentation at a, one of our other standard meetings, just as a check-in. And then the actual physical budget process that I do is different than what they do with the clubs, because I just give them a spending capacity, like this is what we're going to get, we're anticipated revenue, anticipated expenditures. And then that's the state level, then they come back in of what they want to do to clean up. I'm expecting, I'm going to get a bunch of transfers, I was like, the clubs didn't use their money, their, their allocation, so we're going to roll it back up and push it back out next year, that's what we've talked about. So they're looking at doing some year-end cleanup work, which they create the transfers and then I interim for them. So yes, long-winded answer to yes, I still talk to them pretty regularly.
Excellent, glad to hear that, as best as it's possible with a student first, that you're able to keep that moving. Thank you. Just a reminder that I, we, we really appreciate the diligence that you put in to make sure that we're in a secure position as a district, both yourself and Dr. Moshe, and these presentations. I know that the one sheet you skim by so quick is all that's required and all that many boards get to see. And I very much appreciate that we get to see more than that and get a lot more in-depth views, so thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, our next report is the student superintendent's report, Annual Review of Policy 3123 Withdrawal Prior to Graduation. I'll pass this off to Dr. Moshe.
Thank you. So Christie's going to bring up a slide for me that shows you the requirement that I provide for you every year, which is our senior class, any withdrawals prior to graduation. We always have a handful, and for the most part, what this is designed to do is tell you if you have students who are failing and dropping out. That is not our situation. We have students who have clearly moved, Danbury, Connecticut, Alabama, Arkansas, Redmond, Washington, Seattle. So, and a couple of students who've switched into our own SWOAP program. So again, this report is required, and as you can see, we're looking at three, six, nine individuals. Okay, that being said, in terms of the superintendent's update, I want to make sure that we put out the call. It's on our website as well. We have an urgent need for school bus drivers. We will train, we will pay you while you're being trained. It requires that you have a clean license and pass a physical. The hours have gotten much better because our school day starts a little bit later than it used to. So drivers are usually on around 6:00 AM till about 8:30, and then they come back for the afternoon runs. There's opportunities for field trips. It's actually a good salary for an individual to do this work. So I would encourage people to really think about it. We have a class starting July 7th. So we would love to have at least five or six folks. We have three drivers retiring, one moving away, we have eight bus runs. And we had nine drivers, which meant we had one sub, and now we're going to be short drivers. So it will take this summer to train, and people will come out of this with their bus driving license, their CDL. So it's worth it for folks to, to get trained. It's often been folks who've retired from other jobs, or folks who have time during the day, or have other jobs and they fill in around it. So if you're willing to drive a big rig, we're looking for bus drivers. We also are recruiting heavily for teaching staff for the first time in a long time. We also are recruiting heavily for teaching staff for the first time in a long time. I think Mrs. Richards has the record this year of, I think you're looking for eight, seven or eight people. Three at the middle school, three at the high school. So we are, we will have a cohort of new staff that we will do new teacher orientation with and mentoring for. It's a pretty exciting time. I think, I think Dr. Clifford's going to have a lot of fun. I do. I think she's coming into a really nice situation, good transition plan. So that, that feels really positive. Bond update, Christie's going to put a bond update in the navigator. I hope folks will pay attention. Lots of change will happen this summer. People will finally see their bond dollars at work. The siding and the roof at the high school will be heavily in process. And everything and everyone at the high school and middle school are moving. They're packing their things. They're going to be relocating because as that work moves its way around the building, people have to vacate those spaces. We will have four portable classrooms out behind the high school. So it will become very, very visible at the high school, middle school building. And that process will be over a two-year span. And the second summer for people who are going to ask the next question is when are we doing the field and stadium? It's the second summer. This summer coming up is our first summer. So it will take time and I know we passed this bond in November of 23. And that's how long it takes to get all of our ducks in a row and the permitting and the bond money and the, you know, the construction folks in place to get things to actually move forward. So anyway, other than, I have a meeting on June 18th with y'all as we set goals for next year. And on June 26th, I will be happily swearing Becky in for the role. She has been working furiously at two jobs. And I really appreciate her leadership and her really good sense and her teamwork with our team and her energy. So I think the board did an outstanding job selecting your new superintendent. So I've really appreciated working with her.
That's all I have, Carter. Thank you. May I reflect that I want to give a special acknowledgement to this year's graduating seniors who are witnessing a school about to be transformed. And may I recommend coming back in 20 years? And if you're a parent raising your own children here, as I have chosen to do, so that you can enjoy the new improved buildings with another generation.
Any board comments slash reports?
I'd like to tie in with your mention of the transition process and note that Director Greenharren has offered to take a look at the WASDA Annual Conference presentation submission that I'm finishing up here today and tomorrow. So we should have that ready to go in before the deadline on the 31st.
I just want to let my colleagues know that WASDA, the Washington State School Districters Association, published this guide called A Guide for Effective School Board Members. It's sort of a summary of some of their previous publications about what it means to do board governance. It's, I found it really approachable and readable. I decided to print it out and, because I can focus better on physical paper. And so to save trees, if anyone else would like to read it when I'm done, just let me know. I'm almost done with it. I tried to finish it before this meeting, but a few pages left. It's been a great review on a lot of the things I learned a while ago and also learning some new things. So I've been really getting value out of reading it.
Thank you. I recall being asked to provide feedback on an early version of that document. And I really appreciated how WASDA seeks wisdom from its membership in developing such resources. And so I'm happy to see that it has hatched. And I appreciate the offer of a look at your physical printout. I may take you up on that. Thank you.
This meeting is now adjourned, but I do not hit the gavel because the board is going into executive session. For the purpose of evaluating the superintendent for no longer than 30 minutes.
Thank you.